And strengthening our community. Lift up our hearts so we may be driven by the best of our nature. Lead us to grow the loving spirit of understanding and compassion among us all. Comfort those in need with your healing touch. Lead those who are hungry to nourishment. Grant us wisdom and patience in our deliberations tonight so that our actions may be worthy of your continued blessings. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Harper, would you please call roll?
Councilwoman Fugit. Councilwoman Helsley. Councilwoman McKenzie, here. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Ryder. Councilwoman Roberto.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh. Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilman Thomas.
So six, six members present, which does constitute a quorum. So we'll continue. Next item, is there a motion on the minutes from the November 12th meeting?
Motion seconded.
Okay, motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any items to be withdrawn? Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to withdraw item 12K.
Okay.
And I'll just make a comment if I may on this.
Motion's been made to withdraw item 12K. It's been made and seconded. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I want to thank the applicant for this development. They met with the neighborhood, the Vessel neighborhood, had a very good earnest discussion around what would fit there and what wouldn't, and they listened well, and I just want to compliment them for agreeing to listen to the neighborhood and develop responsibly. So, that's it, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion to withdraw item 12K? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other items to be withdrawn? Okay, any items to be postponed? Councilmember Ryder.
Yes. The applicant would like to postpone 12H, 12I, and 12J to the January 7th meeting.
Okay. Motion's been made to postpone until January 7th, items 12H, I, and J. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion about this motion to postpone? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion to postpone carries. Okay, any other items to be postponed? Okay, are there any items requested to be added by motion? Is there a motion on the consent agenda? Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, good evening, it's time now for my mayor's report. First, I want to start by wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I hope that you all will get some time with friends and family over the coming days. I will be hosting about fifteen people at our house, so I'm looking forward to that. And also, there's several city events that I want to invite you and the general public to. So, we will be lighting the city's Christmas tree at Regal Celebration of Lights the night after Thanksgiving. Music starts at 5:15, followed by the tree lighting, fireworks, and Santa at 8:00. There's a lot for the entire family, and it's all free, and I hope to see you out there. We'll also be opening up the ice skating rink on Market Square that same day. And I want to thank Councilmember McKenzie for helping us open up the festivities at Chihuahua Park last Friday. I heard that was really fun, so I appreciate that. I also wanted to let you know that we do expect significantly colder weather this weekend, and we understand from the Office of Joint Housing Stability that the warming centers that were in place during cold weather last year will also be reopened in time to address needs during this cold spell coming up this weekend. So, the Joint Office will be sharing more information about these emergency warming centers tomorrow. So I want to thank Erin Reed, the various churches involved, and the community partners who are coming together to make those warming centers possible. Another quick announcement, I wanted to let you all know that this, we will be having our city council meetings in January and February instead of the large assembly room. It'll be in the small assembly room, and that's because we're going to get, fix this problem where Councilmember Ryder or anyone sitting in that corner can't see the people. It's not, no, it's county commissions and other people who meet here have had that same problem. So, PBA will handle those updates to make visibility and access better, so we will be sure to keep you all updated. They plan to have the work done by the end of February. So, we'll be reminding everybody when you come, you know, it'll be in the small assembly room starting January into February. Rules of decorum, a quick reminder, those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forums should sign up with the city recorder before 4:00 PM. Please do not use profanity when speaking to specific agenda items, please remember to stay on topic. Robert's rules state that remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly, that his statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules may be ruled out of order and asked to step away from the podium. For those who are listening, please note, you may not disrupt a public meeting from the audience, those who do may be asked to leave. Thank you in advance for respecting these rules. And that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any reports from council members or committees? Okay, we'll move right on to item 8A, please.
8A is a resolution confirming the reappointment of Brad Salisbury and the appointment of Kim Black to serve as members of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code, Chapter 16, Article 13, to amend the amount of the hotel occupancy tax imposed by the city and to amend the permitted uses of the proceeds of such tax.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, we have two people signed up to speak in favor of this. First is Michelle Hummel. Ms. Hummel, are you present? Next is Mary Bogart. We'll come back if Michelle arrives.
She's in traffic.
Oh, yeah, okay, understood. Go ahead, Ms. Bogart, you, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes. You need to turn the microphone on, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Mary Bogart, 701 Henry Street, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37902. I'm the general manager of ASM Knoxville. We manage all of your public assembly facilities, and those include the Knoxville Convention Center, World Tour Exhibition Hall, the Knoxville Civic Auditorium and Coliseum, and Chihuahua Park and Exposition Center. And I'm here to speak in support of the hotel motel tax increase. We do have some amazing and very, very busy facilities. Our facilities do have some age to them now, and deferred maintenance or facility upgrades has become crucial operational weakness for us. We also are compared to and are in competition with multiple other markets who continue to make improvements and upgrades to their facilities. Additionally, emergency repairs are far more expensive than having made the capital improvements on the front end. So, turning the corner to get ahead of this issue is a goal that I 100% support, and I applaud this administration and I applaud this city council for making this a priority. So, thank you. I do want to give you some information that I didn't have the opportunity to give on the first reading. I tried to sign up, but I didn't get here in time. But I'm super proud of our team, I'm super proud of Knoxville, and I'm proud of our facilities. Last year, we hosted 839,766 attendees in 509 events with 1,386 used stays. At the Knoxville Civic Auditorium and Coliseum, a facility that's now 63 years old, last year, I want you to know that 35% of our ticket sales came from outside of the state of Tennessee, 40% of our ticket sales came from outside of Knox County, so we are driving economic impact. This Knoxville, who reports our economic impact numbers, last year reported the economic impact for the Knoxville Civic Auditorium and Coliseum was just over $64 million. Now, Kim's not here to defend herself, and she has a formula that they use, and we don't typically get involved in that, but if I take my attendance and I divide it by that number just for the Civic Auditorium and Coliseum, that comes out to about $212 per person. It's not an unreasonable number, so that's people staying in hotels, eating in Market Square, buying their gas in Knoxville, hopefully spending a little money with us, buying their drinks with us, and enjoying the show. In addition, we supported 45,000 jobs just from the Civic Auditorium and Coliseum last year. We also host, we're home to the Knoxville Ice Fairs, the Knoxville Symphony Orchestra when they're not paying, playing at the Tennessean, numerous local regional dance recitals and cheer events. In addition to all that, we had 37 touring shows just last year, so that facility is enhancing the lifestyle of Knoxvilleians, and it's certainly putting Knoxvilleians to work. At the Knoxville Convention Center, now 23 years old, we've hosted attendees from 86 countries, and last year, Knoxville reported our economic impact for the year was over 88 million. So that number divided is 198 per person, so again, a very reasonable number. That's people coming to Knoxville, they're staying in hotels, we have found that international customers stay a little bit longer, they're eating in our restaurants, they're buying their souvenirs here, they're staying, and they're playing in Knoxville. Our front of the house in that facility looks amazing. We hear it all the time from meeting planners when they come to Knoxville to do a site visit and determine whether or not they're going to be bringing an event to the building. It looks beautiful on the, on the front of the house, but the building is aging, and so the systems are becoming a concern, and those are things that you just don't see. Chihuahua Park is far more community centric, with 70% of its events being city or community-based, but just had under 70,000 attendees last year and just a little over $8 million in economic impact. And they supported 33,000 jobs. So, I want to thank you from our team, from our tours, our meeting planners, our clients, and our stakeholders for making this, to ensure that we keep Knoxville marketable and that our facilities continue to represent our amazing city so well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, that concludes people signed up to speak to this. Just as a reminder, I know you all discussed this at length of first reading, but on average, this represents a $1.17 increase to people's hotel bills, so that's how much it is. What's it for? Deferred maintenance to help support our visitor economy, which is a big part of our economy, and that deferred maintenance will be towards things like the Civic Auditorium and Coliseum, World's Fair Park, Volunteer Landing. And then the last question, who pays? Visitors. So, I appreciate your support for this on first reading and hope you'll vote for it again tonight. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
9B is an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 7, Division 4, Section 2-767 of the Knoxville City Code to update the retention schedule for building and construction records.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9C is an ordinance to amend, I'm sorry, approving the request of Cherokee Country Club for an amendment to the West City Sector Plan from medium-density residential office, low-density residential, and mixed-use special district Bearden Village to other open space for a portion of property located at 5331 Lyons View Park, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, District 2.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Can I combine items C, D, and E?
You may make a motion to it if your colleagues are supportive, that's fine with me.
I'm going to make a motion to combine, although we've already approved C, if I could make a motion that combines items D and E, I'd appreciate it.
So, the motion's been made to combine item D and E. Okay, it's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion about the motion to combine? Seeing none, all those in favor of combining those two, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Would you please read D and I guess E? Okay. Do, you want me to read them? No, you can just do D.
Okay. And 9D is an ordinance approving the request of Cherokee Country Club for the one-year planned amendment from medium-density residential office, low-density residential, and mixed-use special district Bearden Village to other open space for a portion of property located at 5331 Lyons View Park, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, District 2.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion made to approve and seconded. Again, you're voting on both D and E together. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9E is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 1524 Riverside Road from RN1 District, RN1 to RN2, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged, Hayoia Design and Development, applicant 6, District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have anyone here from the development team this evening?
Is anyone in the audience here for item 9F? Hayo Design and Development? Anyone here? Okay, I guess not.
I'll try to reach out to them separately. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Knoxville's Community Development Corporation as the city's redevelopment authority, transferring $5,970,986.87 to KCDC for the construction of the Old City Streetscapes, Willow Avenue Streetscapes, and Stadium Public Space Projects.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, this next item is funding for a project you've already approved and funded. This will just transfer the money to KCDC to get the job done faster and more efficiently. Rebecca Jane Justice and Ben Bentley from KCDC are both here if you have any questions. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Thomas.
Just a comment, more actually for the public than this body. This, I think, is a really good project as far as consolidating some of the area around the new stadium. It helps a lot with pedestrianism and some of the alternative transportation, I think, when it's completed. But for the public, we do want to acknowledge that this is going to be a loss of some of the parking that we've had in the past, and we don't want to ignore that, but the staff and the administration have been talking with me and others about doing something to alleviate or compensate for that lack of parking, which will influence the, or impact some of the service workers downtown. Several things have been talked about. If I may mention, one is that the parking that exists already up under I-40, just north of Magnolia, has really been underutilized. That's actually a fairly short walk to the Old City, and that's one of the spaces that we could be looking at and with some other things. So, good project overall. We do acknowledge that there is some downside to it, but we really want to work to correct that, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas, and just, just so you all know, that our team is working with all due haste and coordination with Boyd Sports and other partners, CAT, and, you know, this project to have a plan in place for when the stadium opens for parking, and we would love to share those plans with council in a workshop coming up this spring, you know, February, something like that. So, it's a, it's an exciting time, but it does mean a lot of coordination is needed, so, not just for game days, but just in general for the increased traffic and attendance. It's, it's a good problem to have, but, but it is something we need to address, so thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, there's someone signed up to speak in favor of that. It passed, so Dustin Durham, I apologize. It sounds like you were in favor anyway, so I'm really sorry. Whoops, my mistake. Okay. 11B, please.
11B is a resolution authorizing the Industrial Development Board of the City of Knoxville to negotiate and accept from Origin Development Partners LLC or an affiliate thereof, payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to certain real property located at Zero West Hill Avenue and Zero Locust Street in the City of Knoxville, Tennessee, and finding that such payments are deemed to be in furtherance of the public purposes of the board as defined in Tennessee Code annotated Section 7-53-305.
Okay, thank you. We do have people signed up, I'll get that on the front end this time. We have three people signed up to speak in favor of this and one in opposition. We'll start with Dustin Durham. Mr. Durham, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Can you hear me? Yes, yeah. Dustin Durham, 1422 Cornelia Street, Apartment 2. So, for those who don't know me, I'm the founder and executive director of a new 501(c)(3) nonprofit here in town called Yes Knoxville. You may remember myself or some of our board members speaking in favor of the missing middle stuff a few months ago. We basically are trying to educate people on urban planning issues and to promote more housing, transportation, and community space here in town. And so, when looking at ways to tackle the housing crisis, there are obviously a lot of strategies that you can take to help us add a lot of different types of homes, and pilots are one great tool that on principle, Yes Knoxville does support. It's not only critical to help create below-market rental homes in the city, but to make sure we're doing all we can to create more homes in general. This project and the use of a pilot to get it built is one that our organization is fully in support of, because not only will it provide more homes at a more attainable price in our most dense and walkable neighborhood, but every new home in general that is built helps current renters like myself. Because I often worry that someone will come to my landlord and offer him a price that he cannot refuse to turn my apartment into a home that is owned that will essentially kick me out onto the street, right? And this is a fear that a lot of renters in our city have. And the more homes we have in general, the less likely that that is to occur. So, make no mistake, even high-end luxury homes help out those of us who are not wealthy and will continue to rent for the foreseeable future. Every new home is a blessing even to renters. The addition in this project of a corner retail space on Hill Avenue will also help to begin to activate another street in our lovely downtown, and we all know the benefit of adding more residents to the tax base. The location of this tower is in a walkable, bikeable, transit-friendly location, and the densest developments are perfectly at home in a downtown. And while, yes, Knoxville doesn't comment on the details of architectural designs, because obviously one person's ugly is another person's art and vice versa, we believe that the scale of this building is more than appropriate for the location and will help a lot in helping our city to smartly grow and tackle this housing crisis. When we can use government to aid the general population through a mechanism like a pilot, everybody wins in the end. I personally and Yes Knoxville hope that you'll vote yes on this resolution so that this wonderful development can begin and we can turn an empty ugly lot into new homes for our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak in favor of 11B is Mark Hines. Mr. Hines, are you present? Okay, they're off to the side. Okay, yep, I see him. Good evening, thank you for being here. If you could state your name and address for the record, you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Good evening. My name is Mark Hines, and my address downtown is 123 South Gay Street. I am an architect and developer in downtown Knoxville. My partner David Dewarhurst and I have had the privilege of working on several projects downtown, and I'm here tonight to speak in full support of the pilot for the project at Hill and Locust. I've seen firsthand how pilots can be a game changer for developers, businesses, and entire districts of our city. You know, the first projects that were done in downtown Knoxville were the Emporium and Sturkey Lofts, and those have rolled off, the pilots, years ago. The city's collecting full taxes for those, but if you just look at that block, the 100 Block of Knoxville right now, of Gay Street, you can see what's happened from those first initial pilots and how successful that entire block is today, based on the commitment the city made in 2003 to that block. Tim Hill is doing a project right now, a block away, new construction, everybody's been renovated on that block. First Fridays happen there, we have more development just around the corner coming. It's pretty exciting. So, that's just one example of what a pilot can do for a district. Several of our projects, including the Emporium, White Lily Flats, Mill and Mine, keener building, would not have been possible without the support of the city's incentive programs. These incentives allow us to take risks, invest in areas that needed revitalization, and ultimately transform underutilized vacant spaces into working hubs and activity. Dave and I often joke that when we did White Lily, it was north of the Old City, and we felt like we were crazy for not staying in Market Square and on Gay Street. So, we took a chance, did White Lily, we received a pilot from the state of Knoxville, and that project's been very successful, and you can look around that project today and see Jeffrey Nash did Muse 1 and Muse 2, we did the Mill and Mine, and Riga Square, with 100 apartments or 100 condominiums actually, and a food hall has been built on that same area. So, again, just the first pilot has incentivized so many other districts in that, in that, in that district, or so many buildings in that district, it's pretty telling. These incentives make it financially feasible for us to take on challenging projects, but they also contribute to broader economic impact. New businesses moved in, jobs were created, and property values increased. Obviously, we all know property values have increased tremendously in downtown Knoxville. The tax basis increased incredibly. These projects have benefited us, but also have helped bring a new life to neighborhoods and foster sense of community. I've experienced firsthand how these incentives have led to long-term success, creating kind of a ripple effect that extends far beyond the initial development. When developers have the confidence to invest in downtown, it attracts further investment, creates a vibrant environment for the residents, and provides an attractive destination for visitors. Dave and I are currently coordinating a group of developers from out of town right now, and it's encouraging to show them some of the success we've had everywhere, and it's encouraging for them to recognize that the city of Knoxville and this, this group, body of elected officials, also believe in development downtown Knoxville. So, I encourage us to kind of keep that up, and by supporting this pilot program, you'll be helping create the conditions for even more success stories. Developers like myself will be empowered to invest in downtown areas, squaring the kind of growth and transformation that benefits our entire city. In closing, I really urge you to vote for this pilot at Hill and Locust, but not just for the buildings, but for our economy and the future of our downtown. And I'd like to thank all of you for, I know it's a thankless job sometimes for the council person to, to be here, but you've worked with me for many years, and I appreciate that, and thank you all very much, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak in favor of item 11B is Patrick Casson. Mr. Casson, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council. You can raise up the podium if, if you want, but I think this.
I'm too nervous, I'm going to break it, so we won't do that. Good evening, my name is Patrick Casson, Vice President of Development with Woodfield Development. My address is 7,000 Perimeter Center, Suite 1,000, Atlanta, Georgia. On behalf of Woodfield and our joint venture partners, Origin Development, I want to thank you for your time and dedication to the intentional and continued growth of Knoxville. We are thrilled to bring our high-quality project to the city and are confident it aligns with Knoxville's key development principles. This development not only reflects our commitment to excellence, but also contributes meaningfully to the community by incorporating a valuable component of affordable housing in this irreplaceable location. This project represents an essential piece of a broader vision for a dynamic and flourishing downtown. We firmly believe in the transformative impact of mixed-income communities, the, the transformative impact that mixed-use income, mixed-income communities, apologies, can have in driving progress and improving the quality of life for residents. By creating housing opportunities for individuals and families across a range of income levels, we foster a more inclusive, vibrant, and sustainable community. Mixed-income developments promote economic diversity, support workforce housing, and strengthen the fabric of neighborhoods by encouraging greater social interaction and a sense of shared purpose among residents. These communities help attract businesses, enhance economic growth, and create a more dynamic local culture. Through the introduction of the pilot program, we are proud to include 30 units, or 10% of our project is affordable housing at 80% of area median income as defined by HUD. This equates to a significant discount of 45% to 59% below projected market rents. of 45% to 59% below projected market rents, demonstrating our commitment to addressing affordable housing in a meaningful way. Thank you for your steadfast stewardship of Knoxville and for prioritizing the greater good of this community. We deeply appreciate your support for this project and look forward to answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bill Lyons, signed up to speak in opposition to 11B. Dr. Lyons?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. It's a pleasure to be back here again. I'm at 608 West Hill Avenue, by the way. I have to say, it was kind of amusing listening to Mark Hines, my friend, speak, because every one of those pilots that he referenced, I think I spoke to you in favor of when I was a staff member at City Council, but there was a big difference there. The area we're speaking about for the pilot is not one that is in need to stimulate investment around it. The investment, either across the river or proximate to it in downtown, is occurring well on its own. So, I think I'd like to make that distinction, that investment is great, but a pilot should only be granted if it's necessary to bring about the investment. I've written you outlining my concerns with the project at hand. They mainly revolve around the "but for" question for this development, which is primarily a luxury apartment building with some under-market units. I concur with the priority for housing of any type. I also share the concern for more housing for those making less than the median income, or in this case, workforce housing. I do, however, have serious concerns about what is before you. First, and most importantly, this project is eligible for the benefits of opportunity zone investment. The opportunity zone benefits have always driven interest in the project. It drove interest when I was at the city and developers contacted me. It's a fundamental element of those marketing the land. In fact, the sign at the front of the property proudly proclaims "opportunity zone" as a benefit. So, I was concerned that the opportunity zone benefits were not included as part of the pro forma in the analysis. At the initial meeting we had with the developers, and I've appreciated our interaction with the developers, they indicated, I asked, "Is this an opportunity zone project?" And they said, "Yes." As I expected they would. It's a benefit there to be taken. Even without the opportunity zone or requested pilot, the third-party review for the project shows an annualized return of 10.5%. The analysts carefully indicate that this is below the target range desired by developers, 12% and above. I imagine they'd like to get as high a return as possible. We all would. The question should not be what an investor would like to receive. The question should be, is the return comparable to what similar projects do receive? I claim no expertise here, but in doing a little bit of research, that figure is often cited at around 10%, which is what this shows coming in. There is a public interest in setting an environment for the construction of more market-rate housing, such as, that was the goal, allowing more density as a major component of the recode process that I spent years with. However, it's contrary to the public interest to underwrite luxury housing with deferred tax dollars in an area already experiencing rapid investment downtown Knoxville. Does the city want to abate taxes on luxury housing as incentive to developers throughout the city? I don't think so. But what about requiring some below-market housing? There's a growing and important city function. I fully support. I appreciate the administration setting it as a priority. However, the projected implementation is highly inefficient, limited in time and scope, and most importantly, in the benefit provided. We have a well-managed, very efficient mechanism for this affordable housing, and that's the Affordable Housing Rental Fund. I worked with Becky Wade and Mayor O'Hara to establish the precursor of the present version, and was then the Community Development Department. Merrick and Cannon, with your support, has greatly expanded the dollars for this fund. It's very efficient in converting dollars to below-market units, serving many individuals at 60% of AMI. So, what if providing a $15 million tax abatement to incentivize 30 units for 10 years, what I don't think is a great bargain. It may be relative to the amount charged for the luxury units. What I calculated is a 760-square-foot unit at the developer's projected rate of 1,450 a month, including parking. $15 million will buy each of those 30 heads of households a $1.5 million home. Far less money could pay for 10 years of total rent. What makes sense to me is to let the project move forward and pay their taxes and near-mark the city's portion of the tax revenue to the Affordable Housing Rental Fund. I've been, it's been expressed to me concern for my appearing here. I want to briefly adjust that. Of course, I have an interest in this. I live in the overlooked, the affected project. I've avoided speaking with any of you about this project, even though I run into almost all of you regularly, at a concern of the ethics of leveraging my relationship in any way to keep you from making an objective decision. In fact, as you know, the email's the first that you've heard from me on this. So, yes, I am concerned about this. I see it as a $15 million gamble that the project and others like it will not occur at the affected location. You have to sort through many--
Dr. Lyons, I'm sorry, your time has up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Council members, just wanted to, you know, just give a little overview of this item. This pilot is, would be to support one of the biggest downtown investments we've seen in recent years, estimated at $135 million. It would add 297 new housing units, along busy corridors, redeveloping a very difficult site that's been vacant for decades. 10% of these units, actually a little more than 10%, 30%, would be workforce, dedicated workforce housing. In addition to the design review process, this project has been through an in-depth vetting process, including a detailed third-party financial analysis. And this third-party review concluded that this project would not be possible without the pilot. And this in-depth review process is what drives recommendations for projects to counsel. You should know that not all of the projects that come to the city do make it through this process. We deny some applicants because they don't get the green light from this third-party review. So, I know my Chief of Staff, David Brace, provided some clarity on our financial review process via an email earlier today, but I just wanted to reiterate in case, in your busy lives, you might not have had a chance to read that. So, the third-party financial evaluation performed by KCDC is the same process initiated under the O'Hara administration, except that we have strengthened the process by emphasizing the workforce housing and establishing project priorities for all interested applicants. Until recently, the city's development priorities were not transparently listed on the webpage, and now they are, and you're all very familiar with them. And this project meets all those criteria. And again, the third-party analysis has not changed. It's based on pre-tax internal rate of return, which is the best practice in this industry. I hope you'll support this important investment. I think it's good for our city. I think it's good for our housing supply. Our team, Rebecca Jane Justice and others are here. Mr. Bentley from KCDC, Mr. Mametov are here to answer questions, as you all have questions that occurred during your discussion. Let's see, we have Ms. Parker. Did you have a question?
Thank you. One issue that I wanted to clarify when it came to our pilot program and the third-party review, is we've had projects come before us that were in an opportunity zone, and that was not included in the review. And I remember what I was told at the time was that the third-party review relies on whatever information the company provides. So, I'm trying to get a better understanding of our third-party review process and whether--
I'm going to ask Ben Bentley to come up here and answer that question. He is the expert on that for us.
Whether we have a practice or policy of reviewing ourselves, what options they might have available to them, or whether we rely on that developer and what they submit.
We do rely, but we absolutely verify within reasonable assumptions. So, the good news is, we're relying on other real developments that we've seen go through this process recently. So, we get actuals once the closing occurs, and we can see costs and expenses relative to similar types of development. Also, just because KCDC does a whole lot of housing development that is comparable to much of what comes for pilot approval, we have real-time data, so we're constantly pricing our own deal. If we see something in the cost or in the revenue expectation that's out of line with reality, we check that on the front end. The second step of that, though, is us sending it off to a true third party that doesn't exist in Knoxville, an external group to review it, once again, just to get an extra set of eyes on it and make sure that we're not missing anything, or that we're not out of step with what would be normal under a market condition.
And so, under this situation, why were the opportunity funds not included?
So, we, from way back, maybe Dr. Lyons actually may have initiated this, but the pre-tax IRR approach that we use, it's very difficult, number one, to, 1031 exchanges have been around a long time. They're very similar to opportunity zones. All of these tax benefits accrue to individuals, and it's very difficult to assess particularly who is receiving that return, the brain damage that would be involved in that. I like to think we're good at the basics of the evaluation, but to do that, that would be about a year and a bunch of lawyers to be able to effectively tease that out. The second piece on Oz's right now, that program currently expires 12/31/26. So, most of the benefits that could accrue to a developer using those funds and the number cited in the email that I think you all received Sunday, that is not accurate anymore.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, Mr. Bentley. So, one of the questions that I had for you when we were asked about opportunity zone funds, the predecessor and similar vehicle to that is 1031 exchange. What pilots have we had in the past that we've approved that used opportunity zone funds and also 1031?
So, I definitely have an op fund example, because they've refinanced recently and tried to pull some of those funds out. So, I think the Supreme Court side is a really good example. 25-year pilot, I'd like to point out, we're at 10 years here. We've really tried to refine this process to make it much tighter than it used to be. There wasn't Oz in that one. Based on the third-party analysis that I looked at, it was not reviewed or considered in our financial analysis. So, there is a precedent for approving a very long pilot for a deal with Oz funds in it.
And we have examples with 1031 exchange as well?
I'm sure there are. I can't cite them off the top of my head, but I have to assume that there were investors that had sold some assets and--
That's a very common thing.
Yes.
Okay. And we don't analyze where their funding came from?
Correct.
Okay. This may be a question for, well, I don't know if it's for Mr. Bentley, Mr. Brace, Ms. Justice. How has the pilot program and analysis changed over time, maybe like the last few years?
Thank you for that question. We are really proud in the fact that, like Ben just pointed out, that we've been able to be more specific and strategic on listing out certain key development priorities, which we have created from the past system, and saying, "These are the criteria that we need for successful development that Knoxville needs as it grows and changes." So, one of the biggest things is that we have a list of key development priorities. Some of those are inclusion of workforce housing, development along corridors, development on vacant sites. So, you can see how this project is fulfilling some of those. Also, one of the things that our incentive process evaluates is just shortening that time of the incentive. So, a lot of our incentives in the past were 20, 25 years. As you all know, some of these incentives that have come before you are closer to 10 and under. So, we're looking at more specific and strategic projects contextually and shorter pilot time frames.
Can you recall the last time we've approved over 10 years? I cannot recall one in a while.
I don't think we've done one over 10 years since I've been mayor, but I could be wrong.
I don't think so.
Maybe a jobs one or something?
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we obviously have a big holiday weekend, or a big holiday coming up, and so, when you're driving around town, you see a lot of out-of-state tags. But that's not unique to a holiday weekend anymore, because people are moving here. And there's a lot of demand for being in Knoxville. You know, what we see with that is that our supply of housing does not match what we have for demand, and that's a very real way that a lot of, like, that we feel in rent increases and housing prices increases. And that means that when our students who are graduating from the University of Tennessee are looking for jobs, or our family members are looking to move here to be closer to their family, or somebody accepts a job to come to Knoxville, they have a very difficult time finding a place to live. And we've always been a traditionally very affordable city, and we need to get back there. And the only way we get back there is by increasing supply. And this, these incentives that we're talking about, that's exactly how we do that. This particular project brings 297 units, which I know the mayor had already mentioned. That's an important number. That's a lot of units coming in. And it's coming into a place where there's existing infrastructure to support it, which is great. But maybe even better than that, you've got 30 workforce housing developments in that. That's 30 workforce units. We've got to be able to have units at all price points, but we've got to make sure we have units that are affordable as well. The thing I wanted to touch on as well, so I'll be supporting this. The thing I want to touch on as well was some of the other stuff that we talked about. So, our zoning code update provided for this type of activity along our corridors, and specifically about mixed use, which I think everybody supports. That's another place that we need to be dealing with this. We have a significant supply problem. The only way you're going to address supply problem is by looking and focusing on areas that have the infrastructure to support it, and that's along our commercial corridors. And that's what I think we need to be doing. So, I love this project. I love that we have 279 units. I love that we have 30 workforce development units here. We need to be doing more of this. And I know we've got, I think, 4,000 units coming online in the next year. That's great, but to keep up with demand, we've got to keep up the pace. So, I hope that we will continue to get out and educate folks along our commercial corridors about the opportunities that these incentives have for them, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
Oh.
I've got Ryder--
That's fine.
--Parker McKenzie.
Got it.
I think my question might be for the developer. So, you're using opportunity zone funding, and your project is contingent upon that?
No, I think that's, opportunity zone funding is an incredibly complicated subject that, as Mr. Bentley indicated, is more to do with the, how capital gains treatment over time. We are not currently pursuing opportunity zone funding. So, I'm sorry for whatever confusion was introduced in that discussion. I don't know how it came about, so just to clarify that. You have to opt into that. Those funds have to be designated at the start of a project by the investor pool. To be honest, we don't actually underwrite the opportunity zone for those investors, because it is such an individual basis of return and how those gains are calculated over time. So, I need a lot more than four minutes to kind of actually talk about how an Oz properly works, but just at 100,000 feet, just to address that. That's what we were whispering about back there.
Okay. So, that's not part of your project?
Correct.
That's not part of your calculations?
Yeah, so the way to think about opportunity zones, if I could give a really simple, kind of, for an institutional asset of this size and scale, we talked about the total capital investment. Traditional investments of this type, you'll find typically pool from two large capital sources. Those will be high-net worth individuals, or family offices, or more institutional groups like health insurance organizations, or life companies, et cetera. That's a gross oversimplification, but just for time. Oz's have introduced a third bucket in which you have individuals who are trying to essentially wipe the taxes associated with gains out through an investment in real estate. And those gains can come through, as you heard, 1031 investments over time. Those can come from stock market, business creation, sales, execution, et cetera. So, it's a very different vehicle. It essentially introduces a third bucket into that larger, again, it's much more nuanced. I'm trying to keep it high-level, so hopefully that helps you understand. Those investors, by the way, still require a market return on their investment. In no way, shape, or form would you say, "Oh, I'm going to wipe out my taxes. I want a lower rate of return on my investment." That's just an untrue fact, so. Went a little off-topic, so I hope that's okay.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Okay, I appreciate clarifying that. Okay, I appreciate clarifying that. Last part of the question I'll ask you, I'm assuming this is not your first rodeo doing a project like this, so to speak. The two scenarios that we have that we're looking at, scenario A and scenario B, I think, sorry, I should have pulled it up, one's ten-point-something rate of return, the other one's eleven-point-something. It's a kind of a negligible difference there with or without the pilot. What rates of returns do you typically go for with your projects?
I made a note of Bill's comment. This is also a very complicated kind of topic. I'm going to be quick. Internal rate of return, the technical definition of that is the discount rate at which you would calculate a net present value of zero, right? You also hear rate of return can be calculated as like a cash-on-cash investment. I put X dollars in, this is how much I get back each month on those dollars. So, I think there was a kind of a gross oversimplification on rate of return in that comment. IRRs in our world, on a ten-year hold, we would expect to see more in the low teens. And so, the big answer to the question here is, we're delivering thirty units of affordable housing that are built, by the way, to the exact same standards as any other unit within the project. So, they are immediately interchangeable within the project, and so that is the real benefit. Is but, you know, but for this, there will be no affordable component.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I ask because a lot of the pilots that we've approved, sometimes it'll be without the pilot. It's an eight percent rate of return. And with the pilot, it might bring it up to 12%. And I realize those are our calculations, maybe how it's done here in Knoxville.
It's an IRR, it's overtime, it's a time value money function. Yeah, sorry, I can geek out on a lot of this, so.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker. Well, if, I mean, doesn't matter, I think your light came on first, but.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this conversation and the points that have been raised by Dr. Lyons, Dr. Lyons, right? I had a meeting about this pilot over two years ago, and so I'm planning to support it, but I continue to feel that it's time to shift our priorities within the pilot program as the market shifts. Our parameters for what qualifies for this assistance should also shift. And we must be committed to the public benefit being more than the improvements, as I heard them described by the public forum speakers just a few minutes ago, in terms of having individuals with a higher income living downtown, having a higher tax bracket downtown, especially when we're in the midst of a crisis. We can't forget about the fact that the majority of the folks living in our city are renters, and they don't have the salaries that folk, that are, you know, that you all are trying to attract downtown. So, we got to make spaces for those folks, too. The thirty apartments at workforce housing level is good. I'd like to see more of a mix of income. When we started talking about the missing middle, my definition for missing middle before many of us were elected were those who, you know, between those who were very, very low income, who could get housing through KCDC, and those who could afford the market rate. And there were the folks in the middle who were being left out. And somehow, that became defined in Knoxville as folks making $70,000. And that's just blowing people's minds because the majority of Knoxville doesn't make $70,000. So, we're trying to, I'm still pushing for housing that hits those folks who can't afford the market rate, who couldn't afford the market rate five years ago. Forget about the market now, couldn't afford it five years ago, and don't qualify for KCDC housing, right? That's the middle in my mind. But now the markets kind of run away from all of that. I don't know what we do at this point, but we got to do something. I looked online today at the price of houses, and, you know, they're still astronomically high, and we have residents buying those homes who are then going to look to us, who are going to look to the government to protect the value of those homes, right? So, we've created a new standard and no wages to meet those standards. So, what we have to do is use these tools, right? Not to increase the earnings of those living downtown, but to get some housing in our community for the folks who are living here, housing that they can afford. So, that's really what I hope the priority for our pilot program can be. You know, I lived in DC for a while, went to law school, and every once in a while, I look back at housing in DC. Very compact area, only so much you can build in DC. But when you put policies in place, it actually reserves some of that space for people with limited incomes. So, there's more income-based restricted apartments available in DC than I can find here in Knoxville that I can afford. And my job's based in DC, so I can move, but I'm committed to y'all. But that's what other folks are thinking is, do I want to pay $250,000 for a two-bedroom condo? Maybe it's $450,000 now in Knoxville for a two-bedroom condo. Or do I want to move to a bigger city that's already got all of these amenities? Let's provide services for the folks who have decided to make Knoxville home now, who've grown up here, who've committed their lives here, who don't make the money to afford these spaces.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Mayor. And so, my question regarding the workforce housing units has been answered since my light was on. I do want to ask, and I don't know if this is for Deputy Chief Brace or Ben Bentley, but I'd like to ask, when you, these, the key metrics were reviewed, and the third party and all of these processes, were there any metrics or areas in particular that stood out as it relates to the but-for in regards to the pilot approval?
Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, on all of these, and Jim Hatfield, that actually conducts most of the third-party back-and-forth analysis, but on every one of these deals, there's a give and take and a pushback on construction costs and sometimes, you know, more technical things like cap rate assumptions and the year that the asset will transact, so when they'll sell it. All of those factor in, are major inputs and assumptions into what the return is going to be, and on every deal, including this one, we, the developer sometimes probably hates us, but we push back on all of those things because there's always, you know, somebody's going to present information that typically is the rosiest for them, and it's our job to kind of safeguard the public interest. So, we do that, and I would say that costs are usually the, cost and revenue expectations are the two areas that are the most malleable as we work with developers through this process.
I know that this particular site appears to be somewhat cumbersome to build on with the sloping, so did that factor into, I'm sure it factored into their costs, and so that.
Absolutely. The site challenges, and I would say going vertical like this. Outside of Cumberland Avenue, I was talking to somebody earlier today, and we could not think of a project that, I mean, is this seventeen, nineteen, how many? A bunch of stories, that's the point. And we hope that more residential high-rise happens in Knoxville. I think this is going to be a proof of concept. And to Councilman Parker's previous question, I hope that we can include more deeply affordable in those future projects. That should be a priority. But yes, the site and the type of construction, once you go above about five or six stories, gets more expensive and more technical.
All right, thank you. And I also want to acknowledge that I do not disagree with Councilmember Parker's comments as it relates to missing middle housing and that income level, group level, that does appear to be missing, and I'd love to see us maybe have more conversation around that for those people who are making, you know, more than, they're making too much to be, to have housing assistance, but not enough to be able to afford some of the, what to some people is affordable, but the average person, it is not. So, I'd love for us to explore that moving forward a little bit more in depth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas.
Yes, just overall, looking at this project, I will support it, and that space there has been not used for a long time. And part of it is because of the challenging topography, and to be able to put that many units in that particular space, I think, is a really asset to the downtown. We do analysis a lot when we do housing, whether the infrastructure's there, whether the density is too much for that infrastructure, how much it will impact the existing housing and neighbors around it. To me, this is the type of area where we would be building density. The infrastructure's there, the customer base is there. I can see with new residences, it would be a boost to some of the businesses downtown. Some of the things downtown are lacking as far as the residents and just generally speaking, medical, dental, pharmacies, grocery stores. And part of that is because of the lack of a customer base. And so, I think if we can provide that here, it will be a real asset to downtown. I do respect Mr. Lyons's analysis, and we are correct in that it's easier to sell property downtown, I think, where it exists, and there is more of a market now than there was. But right now, we have a plan in place that will include some semblance of affordable housing as well. And I do share the sentiments of Councilperson Parker and Councilperson McKenzie and probably others on council. This is relatively affordable, I guess, but when you're talking relatively, that's relative to what the rest of the market is, but that still doesn't mean that it's going to reach people who make much, much lower income. And so, we definitely need to be working on that, so, thank you.
Thank you. There needs, there's not yet a motion on the floor? Motion made to approve in seconded, Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I've struggled with this one a bit. The third-party review process that we have is an objective analytical process, and we rely on that, and I respect Mr. Durham's comments earlier. Mr. Hines, I respect you greatly, and the supply side that we need in this city is important. But we use this tool to have an objective perspective on it, but there's a neighborhood, community perspective as well that I think is important. And so, that's the part that I've struggled with, is trying to understand whether this property can be developed in a way that accommodates some of the reasonable concerns of the area around them. Some of the neighbors that have raised concerns don't know how to formulate those concerns, and some of those have been unreasonable. I think some of them have been reasonable. And so, I struggle with trying to see if this property can be developed without an incentive in a way that both accommodates the neighborhood's reasonable concerns and balances the supply that we need. I wanted to ask the developer, Mr. Kason, is that how you pronounce your name? Traditionally, Mr. Hines did a good job of explaining, as does Dr. Lyons know very well, the history of how pilots have redeveloped certain properties in our community in areas that had no life in them at all, and they've been great. But you made a comment that was interesting to me, that you said that the but-for, we would not have affordable units. And there used to be that the but-for was just about developing the property at a market rate or without some type of subsidized units or affordable or semi-affordable, or used to be affordable, as Councilman Parker and others have said. So, this has been a new distinction, I think, that's been added to the mix, and I think it's okay because it's part of one of the strategies that the administration has outlined. This council has supported every pilot that has come before us and kind of checked those boxes off. So, it's a very fine balance, but this addition of affordable as part of the but-for consideration is a new connection that I hadn't, that I've known, but you said it explicitly today and it just struck home with me. So, I guess, Mr. Bentley, I don't know who to ask this question to, and I'm not necessarily sure what it is, but it is, you drew a direct connection to a but-for analysis that is meant for general market rate incentive and to but-for, we wouldn't have any affordable units. So, that's a new addition into that somewhat objective quantitative assessment. So, talk about that for a second.
Sure. So, I think what we find, so we develop all over the East Coast, so Woodfield Development is a top twenty developer. We've developed about 20,000 units, or about $5 billion worth of product. What we find with the use of TIFs or TADS or pilots is that over time, those programs evolve. And what you will find is in the initial give, is that it's, we just want to attract development, and so we will give this in order to get development. And as that development comes, and we're not the first big developer, we're following a long line of very successful developments, those requirements start to tighten, right? And so, I think there's actually two answers to the question here, but is those requirements start to tighten and include things like affordable housing. What Councilman Parker is talking about is incredibly complicated to introduce fifty, sixty percent AMI. That is beyond my capacity to understand and requires things like tax and other additional tax incentives and bond issuances and other things. But I think that's really the big requirement. And so, in our neighborhood community involvement, our meetings with city staff and others, we really understood that affordability is an issue that the city would like to address and would like to include in this project and future projects going forward. And so, this, in our interpretation, kind of became not a mandatory requirement, but a goal that we struck out to achieve as part of this project, and I think we've been able to successfully do that. One of the limitations, sorry, I'm going to run out of time. One of the limitations of the current analysis that Ben indicated and that we did push back on is that an IRR is an interesting, often misunderstood benchmark to study. It is the benchmark with which this third-party reviewer uses, but we use other metrics such as, we use constant average growth rates, we use cash-on-cash returns and all sorts of other, return on invested capital. And those returns without this pilot, we would not be moving this project forward with even just market rate housing. So, I think there's a very important distinction as we talk about that as well.
Yeah, I just want you to repeat that last part again, please, that you would not be able to do this property even if the city wasn't requesting you add 10% of these for affordable?
That's correct. That's exactly right. So, that's exactly right.
That's all right. And it's okay, we're sharing five minutes, that's gone now, but if I may, if anybody else has any questions, I'll pause, but.
Nobody else is left, right?
Thank you. Can I just keep going for another minute? You stated that you're not pursuing opportunity zone funding, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I heard that correct.
Correct.
Okay. One of the things that's important to me is that when there's a rezoning, upzoning particularly, or a variance that's requested of the community, that the community gets a voice. The community gets a voice in everything, but particularly, there's made some accommodation there that the community has been estimate, and then in return, I don't think it's fair to give an incentive for that. One of the reasons that I'm inclined to support this is because you haven't asked for variations outside of any of our processes. So, I'm just kind of throwing out a disclaimer for all developers that ask for any type of new zoning or variances outside of our standard processes shouldn't necessarily be then rewarded with an incentive, but I'm appreciative of the process that you all went through with the DRB and the Planning Commission, that you didn't try to skirt anything. And while not still accepting to a lot of the neighbors around you, you did make accommodations either by will or by offer to bend a little bit to the community's needs, and so there was a voice there. And so, I just want to, there's been times where developers have come and maxed out everything that they could do and/or go for more and ask for exceptions, and then also ask for incentives, and I think, I don't think that's appropriate. But I don't think that you've done that. So, I think the way that you went through the process for the past year particularly, I think persuades me to support this barely.
We'll take it. Thank you. I think important is, we can, we continue to contend to this day, the process resulted in a better project. We're not arguing that at all, and so we're very appreciative of the process that we've been through, albeit painful at times. We do genuinely believe the project is better as a result of that. times. We, we do genuinely believe the project is better as a result of that process. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Varge Design Solutions Incorporated for the Chapman Highway multimodal project, increasing the contract amount by $80,100 for a new contract total of $294,600, and extending the date of completion to May 31, 2026.
Light, your microphone. Okay, motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign all documents necessary with Knoxville-Knox County Planning to collect pavement condition data and update the existing pavement management system in an amount not to exceed $77,698.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, Mr. Claybo, we have a, I think, a pretty organized process for how you guys pave our roads, and it's delineated X amount of miles per district per year, et cetera. What, what will this change about what we're doing?
Tom Claybo, Engineering Director. So we, we have a pavement management program in, in place. We use software to evaluate streets. So as we're looking, we, we do pave an equal amount in all six districts. But as we're evaluating those streets in each district, we use this, this pavement management process to select those streets. And so this, this contract with TPO will update our pavement information. So they go out and physically drive the streets, get rigibility rutting and those conditions of the asphalt. That's used in our software. And then we analyze streets in each district to select those.
Can I ask a question that's sort of unrelated? Did my time end? I didn't use five minutes. Okay, that's okay. There isn't an equal amount of road in each district, is there?
No.
Okay. I know that's been going for a long time and has a, a long history. But the way the districts are made is by voters, and approximate numbers of voters, not by miles of road. Okay, interesting. Thank you.
Okay.
Just occurred to me.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11E is a resolution to update the defined benefit plan funding policy for the City of Knoxville's pension fund.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to award a total amount not to exceed $1,768,642 in youth homelessness demonstration program grant funds to support eight projects guided by the Coordinated Community Plan and ongoing collaboration with the Youth Action Board.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, we have one person signed up to speak in favor of item 11F, Zoe Broyles. Ms. Broyles, you can state your name and address for the record, and you have up to five minutes to address council.
Hi, my name's Zoe. I, I'm on YAB, Youth Action Board, made out of youth homelessness at age 18 to 24. I'm the secretary to YAB, and I've been working on YHDP, which is a group, which is a group that has been working on allocating money for youth homelessness, and has held space for youth-based decisions. And YHDB, YHDP has helped allocate money for the future of youth homelessness. So YAB and all those who worked on YHDP are appreciative and thankful of y'all's support.
Thank you, Ms. Broyles. That concludes people who signed up to speak to this item. I did want to point out to council that there's several members of the recipients, and the CAC, and other members of the Youth Action Board who are here. If you could raise your hand, if you're here in support of this item. Just wanted to let council know that you took the time out of your busy days to, to be here. And, and councilmembers, this is something you're familiar with. We've been working on it for several years, and now we finally got the grant. And, and the grant's going out to nonprofits in our, in our community that are specifically capable of helping get to zero, functional zero homelessness among our youth. So I'm really, really appreciative of council support and all the community members who made this possible. It's something we've been trying for, for a long time. But $1.7 million to address youth homelessness is a really big win. So just wanted to celebrate that a little bit as we prepare to vote. Councilmember McKenzie?
Yeah, I just want to echo what you just said, Mayor. And just again, to thank everyone who has just worked on this. This is really amazing. And for us to be able to make this type of investment is just incredible. I'm really proud of this administration, us as a council, and being deliberate and intentional. And the young people, you guys have been able to bring the young people together to, so their voices can be heard, and their input is very valuable. So can we give everyone involved a round of applause, please?
All right, now the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
11G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a third amendment to the piggyback agreement with Averro LLC to provide additional enterprise resource planning consulting services to the Knoxville Engineering Department, Plans Review, Inspection, and Inspections, and 3-1-1 in an amount not to exceed $588,645.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you. First of all, I would like to apologize to the community and my colleagues for being late, been trying to get here for five hours from North Carolina. So if you're not on the road, don't get on it. My, but my question is actually, or it's really is a comment. So this will do, this, as I read it, will provide a dashboard, a public dashboard with three, who can answer that for me? I think that's what I read, about where we, it'll be, can you show, create a pilot dashboard to virtually present data from Knoxville Codes, the Community Partnership Offices, KPD. Is that public, or is that just a dashboard for?
Carter Hall, Deputy Director of 3-1-1.
We talk a lot about public dashboards, so I'm trying to
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Fugit. Carter Hall, Deputy Director of 3-1-1, Center for Service Innovation. This is something that our department is going to be quarterbacking, working with codes enforcement, public safety, obviously 3-1-1, our internal data. And basically, what it's going to be doing is a dashboard project to aggregate data across disparate sources, to have everything together for our internal staff, whether that be people in our Neighborhoods Department, the Community Partnership Officers with KPD, so that when they're going and interacting with communities, they're going to have a full scope of basically what's going on in neighborhoods, so they can quickly see the CPOs before they go on duty in a neighborhood or an area that they're working in. They can understand everything that's going on in that community, not just limited to crime data that they might have accessible to them. So it's really going to be an internal project. You know, we will look at opportunities for, you know, public data if that arises. But for the scope of this initial phase, it is for internal use of city staff.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. But we, I do think it would be nice at some point to have a public-facing dashboard. Other communities do it, that talk about where we are on some things. I know we've talked about, this is a first step, you've got to figure out a way to do that. But ultimately, I would like us to be able to transition this to something public-facing.
Absolutely. And I should say, too, a lot of the data that we're going to be aggregating here is actually already publicly available in different dashboards with the crime data we're going to be looking at, that's already uploaded in the LexisNexis. We do want to do a lot more when it comes to public information on the codes and 3-1-1 side. So we are looking at ways to make data more publicly available. This specific item is going to be an internal product, though.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Jowers Cleaning Service for janitorial services for the outdoor restroom facilities located at numerous parks within the city limits for an amount not to exceed $180,280.57.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12H is an ordinance to amend Chapter 17, Article 2, Division 3, Section 17-72, and Article 6, Division 2, Section 17-325 of the Knoxville City Code related to parking violation penalties and metered parking respectively.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Let's see, this is 12A. No, there's nobody signing up to speak. Councilmembers, I just wanted to, first, I'll let you know that I'm sure we've talked a lot about parking, and, and you guys had a great workshop on it. And among the things that I heard, the two strongest messages that I heard from that workshop was, one, concerns about hourly workers downtown in the hospitality and retail industry. And I wanted to let you know that we have, first of all, made it, made it clear that the parking under the I-40 interstate, just on the north side of downtown, is going to remain free and open 24/7/365. So that is one option. You don't need a smartphone, you don't need an app, you just, you can park there. The other thing is that we have asked the downtown Knoxville Alliance, and Michelle Hummel, I think, also got caught up in traffic, if she arrives. Oh, she is here. Well, she's here, should you have any questions. But we did ask, and they agreed, to survey their members, to talk about other strategies that the business community and employers and workers downtown might have for addressing the needs of, of hourly workers who work downtown. The, so, but, so those, the other item that I heard you talk about was the need to have a payment option for people who don't want to have, to deal with an app. And just wanted to assure you that the garages are going to be able to park and pay in cash, you know. So anyone, and that 90% or some, most, 95% of all parking spaces downtown are in the garages. So if you don't want to, or prefer not to pay ca, through the app for the on-street premium parking, that we want to encourage the frequent turnover, the garages will take cash. Neither of those things are before you tonight. The two, the item that was just read, 12A, is about making, updating our fees for, if you violate parking, you know, penalties would go up slightly, consistent with what's happening in Chattanooga and other nearby cities. And then the next one is just to authorize PBA to, to be able to do towing. So I just wanted to know, let you know that all these discussion items that affect our community members, our visitors, our businesses are on our minds, and we appreciate your input, and we're working to address those if we haven't already. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes. The item on increasing the cost of a ticket violation to $25. So I've had some discussions with the mayor about this and staff. That does strike me as the penalty overreaching the infraction. I guess we can have subjective differences about that. But I have heard from constituents, and they think that's, that's too much. I also think it presents kind of a public relations problem. If people were coming from another city, and they took a little bit too long to get through the retail cash line, or they run into somebody on the street they wanted to have a conversation with, and they inadvertently got back, you know, it'd be fair if the ticket was $11 or 15. To me, $26 is, is too much. And I just wonder if people who got those tickets, and they went back home to their hometown and said, yeah, I was in Knoxville, and they charged me $26 for a parking ticket. So I have problems with that. And the amount of revenue, extra revenue that we will collect by increasing this is minimal, I think, in regards to the downside of people feeling like, basically, they were being gouged. So I just kind of wanted to throw that in the mix. But I have, I have a real problem increasing the ticket to that degree. And I've gotten different figures from different people. People say, yeah, it's, it's higher in such and that city. And then I get figures, people email me, and so-and-so, it's less. I think we should look at what is reasonable for Knoxville. But I think when people start do getting these tickets, that they're going to be somewhat shocked and probably miffed. And most of the people that get parking tickets, it's a mistake. They're not trying to game the system. And so I would, I, I don't think I can support the, this proposal as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for your comments, Councilwoman Thomas. I'm going to respectfully disagree, because even with the self-parking, if you go over a second, you're going to pay 75, and sometimes 80 dollars that they charge you. And that is, to me, that's what's very, very unreasonable, very unfair. And you cannot get in touch with a live person to even have a conversation about it. So, you know, I'm just going to disagree on that one. I have heard some, I've heard some people with concerns about that. But I've also heard some people say, hey, that's, that's not unreasonable, because they've experienced the same thing I've experienced here in Knoxville downtown with the self-parking. Yeah, so just wanted to share that and put it out there. Thank you.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Thomas that this issue needs more discussion and, and study. We've only had this come before us, just recently at a workshop. And I've heard a lot of concerns in that time as well, even not having been here for, for much of that time. And what I was reminded of is when I worked downtown, and at times with, you know, used metered parking, and then run out on a, on a break to, to fill that meter, you know, depending on what kind of shift you were working. And thinking about how these increased penalties would impact our residents, the workers downtown, you know. And, and, and I understand also that we are not necessarily actively working on recovering the fines issued, or the fines that would be associated with all of these tickets that are issued. But one thing I do worry about is when, the, the long-term impact it could have, if we build a culture where the, 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 the working-class folks in our community are, are just having all of these small little penalties that pile up, and they just increase your cost of living, and they increase your stress, and they increase, you know, how easy it is for you to navigate and, and live in your own city and community. That's how I see these types of penalties. But I do also agree that there needs to be some sort of adjustment that doesn't award or encourage people to not adhere to the time limits on the metered parking. So I think, you know, something is needed. But we've just been presented with information, just briefly started a conversation, and I, I don't feel comfortable supporting such, such a significant change at this time without further discussion. I think I had another point. Just one second, one, one second, sorry. It's here. Oh, the other thing I mentioned at the workshop that was a concern for me is also about the data management, and our data management policies. I was very concerned when we had the data management and our data management policies. I was very concerned when we had a workshop on the, um, the, the speed camera that Knoxville had borrowed for a year or more. And we had no policies regarding how that data was used, what the, uh, you know, the developer of this new, uh, product was using Knoxville as a test site. And, and we had no policies in place for how, um, that data, uh, would be kept safe. And we know other, um, technologies that, that cities have invested in have had, um, attacks on them that have exposed that data, uh, and exposed, uh, those individuals to identity theft and other things. We know that we've had issues in our city, uh, with data security, both in the city. KC, DC had a, a recent major data breach, breach, uh, at KC, DC. So, we're a city that needs to do some work when it comes to, um, looking at protecting data as a public safety issue. Exposing our residents to identity theft and who, who knows what other harms is no light thing. And we should have policies in place before we invest in a whole bunch of technology that's gonna gather up all of this data in our community and do we don't know what with. Um, so that was a major issue. I'd like to see some policies. Um, and the other thing I wanted to comment on is I'm worried about our reason behind the policy. My, when I read through the materials, it wasn't about, um, the revenue, it wasn't about-
Thank, thank you. Go, go ahead and finish your sentence.
Well, just the increased fees weren't about, um, increased revenue for the city, but they were about moving cars downtown and not having cars, uh, be able to stay so that would release, uh, parking. But we have folks who need, uh, to keep a place downtown for their car for a long time.
Thank you. Um, just as a, a comment, we do have, as I mentioned, you know, free parking under I-40, and that's not gonna change. And we have, for people who need to stay long-term, uh, that's, uh, the garages. Our retail, our retail merchants have said very, uh, clearly that turnover on the premium parking, the so-called beachfront parking, um, is, uh, best for their customers to have that turnover frequently. I also just wanna remind people that we've all made mistakes and not been able to, you know, feed our meter, or we, or an errand takes longer than we thought. Um, if you choose to park, uh, in downtown, I don't, at, um, in this parking app, it'll send you a notification, and you can add a dollar or something, uh, so you don't get, uh, a penalty. Um, moving on to, I think, uh, Councilmember Ryder was next.
Yeah. Um, so, some of the constituent questions I've got particularly revolved around, um, parking and where employees park at. So, Ms. Ball, you and I talked about that. I wanted to know how, um, to address those questions and how we're addressing those concerns. Can you, uh, so, specifically what we're voting on here, 'cause there's been a lot of things thrown about and we're not voting on, but just a couple of factors related to this. We're voting on the violation piece and, um, metered, uh, parking. Um, Ms. Ball, how did we go from 11 to 26? Like, where did that number come from? How'd you get there? Okay. And while, uh, do you work? While, my time is ticking away, while we try to find a microphone that works, um-
Um, if, if a couple people could turn, I think, yeah, we've reached the max.
All right. How about that? Can you turn on now? Couple people went, oh, look at that. Magic. I lost 18 seconds, 16 seconds. Keep going.
Okay, so, um-
How did we go from 11 to 26?
So, when, when we look at the, there's, there's two primary factors. When we look at the price tag for parking inside of a parking garage, it's a max of $7 per day. That's the max.
I could park in the garage all day long for $7.
For $7, that's correct. And when you have a parking ticket on the street, that is $10, which is what our current-
11?
-says. Well, it's, it's $10 plus the $1 state-of-Tennessee litigation tax. Uh, when you have that, your, your cost is not that much more to park there. So, there's not a whole lot, the, the, the financial incentive isn't huge to get off the street. And our, one of the primary things that is really important about on-street parking is the turnover of on-street. Not all parking, but that 5% to 6% of our municipal parking that is on-street parking is designed to move and turn over. And that is in support heavily of our downtown businesses. And, um, Michelle Hummel, I know, is prepared to speak to that if you have a specific question. So, that's part one of it. And then the other thing is, as we looked at citations, no, Knoxville does not need to be the same as every other city, and we won't be. But it is, uh, we are markedly below market value on what we're charging, um, for citations. And so, looking at pure cities such as Chattanooga, Asheville, et cetera, to get ourselves more aligned, we're not necessarily align, aligning with them. I mean, Chattanooga is higher by $10. They're at $35. Um, Asheville is at 40 for many of these different categories of tickets. Um, Nashville has, I mean, you're gonna pay $70 for a ticket. They just don't have the same categories that we do. And Chattanooga and Nashville tend to be a little bit more aligned with us. And so, we felt like, as we were looking at this and the recommendations from the Walker consultants were to, this is a good incremental, this is a good step for us to make versus going to a Nashville price point of $70 seems not very Knoxville-centric, but getting us to that place where we're making the citation a disincentive to misuse the parking.
Okay. Um, so if I'm an employee and I'm working a six-hour, or a five-hour, or an eight-hour shift, or a 10-hour shift, where can I park?
Well, there's a myriad of options for you. Um, as the mayor stated a couple of different times, the two T-dot lots that are right off of West Magnolia.
Those are-
Those two lots are gonna remain, uh, free parking. And so, those are gonna be good options for, for folks. We also have, um, as I mentioned, you know, there is, there are monthly Parker rates that are at a more discounted rate than paying $7 a day for, you know, five to seven days a week, um, in our garages. We also have those as options. And then there are also, um, there's a myriad of different steps. But one of the things that we're really excited about is partnering with the Downtown Knoxville Alliance to work on what is a plan for, um, creating opportunities and making sure that our downtown employees know what the best opportunities are for them for parking. And Michelle, I know, is prepared to speak to that if you want to ask her. She's working on what is it, what are, what could those opportunities be? How could they help manage a program that would support those downtown workers?
Okay. My time is up, uh, or the 16 seconds, I'm reclaiming my time. I just wanna say, I got a ticket in Athens, Georgia, $50. So, uh, much smaller place than here. Um, so.
Interesting. Um, Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, four quick things. Uh, one, I would just say that although I share, um, some of Councilmember Thomas's comments and concerns, uh, a lot of the changes that are in here, I think, are, um, changes based on public input and feedback from us and our workshop. And so, I appreciate the items that have changed and adapted to what we've asked for. So, thank you for that. Uh, the second is to, just to confirm, I thought I heard something, but I wanna make sure. If I park on-street and I'm running late, I can top up using this app or other means to avoid this increased fee?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Um, uh, and Mr. Hummel, or excuse me, Ms. Hummel, would you please come forward? Um, the CBID plans to study, uh, capacity for workers in parking downtown. Very important. I think everybody here was very pleased, uh, at that discussion and the workshop. Uh, my question is, does the CBID have funding to implement what, um, results you might find?
I think it's good, first of all, Michelle Hummel, Downtown Knoxville Alliance, 17 Markets, we're, I think it's gonna depend on what those, what, you know, what it is, what our peer cities or some of the cities and best practices from other cities, what the program looks like. And I think it's also working with employers as well. I don't know what it will look like, but, um, we're definitely committed with the city to do that. And there was talk about parking. Honestly, it drives me crazy when I see employees park in these short-term spaces. Studies show how much business is lost to our retailers and merchants when they park there, from decreased sales, decreased traffic and fit traffic going in. So, we've got ample parking. I know we need to better align and, and utilize our garages better in certain areas, but I think it's, it's trying to get them in the right area and not in the short-term parking spaces. I was late tonight, and so, I outweighed, I'm gonna park, you know, get a ticket or, or park where I should, so, um-
So, I know it's hard to put a price tag on a recommendation you don't have, but what discretionary budget does the CBID have to implement anything?
We do have a budget available, and actually, we're gonna be coming in front of you guys soon with our budget, but we can, I mean, I think it's, we realize, realize what is a priority. Um, we could move some of the development dollars around. So, I think it's really gonna be what is a priority to the board and to the city.
Okay.
Um, so we can move things around.
Thank you. Uh, and then, uh, the last question is for, I guess, Mr. Brace or, um, Ms. Ball. The free lots beside the stadium, both adjacent to where it's being built and across Jackson, under the, the, under the interstate parking, those weren't referenced in the packet. Are those gonna remain free?
We're, we're still working on, um, what the exact detailed plans are gonna be for those lots as it pertains to, uh, preparations for use of the stadium. So, I don't think we have detailed plans to share just yet on those.
Okay. But those lots were considered as part of the parking assessment related to the stadium proposal? Were those units, those parking spaces counted as part of the assessment of how many parking spots do we have? Is it enough to facilitate a stadium?
What, um, yes. The, the study that, okay, it's, well, there's different numbers, just, I wanna qualify that. So, the workshop that we did, and I had a slide during the workshop that had downtown parking numbers, all four of those T-dot lots were not included in those numbers. Those numbers were, um, separate from, from those T-dot lots.
The most recent workshop?
The one we did November 7, whatever that day was.
Yeah. I'm talking about before, when we were debating whether to do the stadium at all. Were those lots considered in the count that I remember, um, Ms. Welch giving us an overview at the time?
Sure. Those lots that you're specifically referencing, we have a parking count that was done in planning and preparations for the stadium, and those lots, the inventory was included.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I think that, I, I plan to support this. Uh, I don't think the amounts of increase are, um, anything that, um, we need to look at as not why we're gonna support this. We're really going from $10 in a fine to $25 a fine. $25 for fire, for parking i, in an obstructive way to fire, um, to $35. Um, there are provisions in here, because not everybody has a smartphone or a credit card for a variety of reasons, and there's still a cash and card option. You can go to the garages where, where most of the parking is. Um, even if you do happen to have an incident happen and there's some, uh, issue, you can appear in front of our judge, the city judge, and talk to him about your issue and, uh, make that, make, get that adjusted. Um, a lot of the times I'm hearing about this is regarding private lots, because in private lots, there is no, you know, attendant, there is no cash or card option, um, there's an app and that's about it. And most of the time when I've actually heard from folks about that issue, it's in a private lot, not in one of ours. And so, I think the key part here is that if you need to use cash or card, you have that option. You can go to the garages. Um, I think there's another point that's very important here as well with regard to violations, which is really what we're talking about. And, and Chief Sharp, just wanted to ask you, can illegal parking impact response time?
Uh, ye, yes, it does. Uh, if people are, uh, double parking on the streets, or obviously if they're blocking fire hydrants, which, uh, which, uh, happened recently. Uh, so, yeah, that, that can affect our response.
Thank you. So, there's a lot of reasons why I think we need to be thinking about what we're doing here. We wanna make sure that there are, we're not talking about available parking spaces and increasing the amount of cost to individuals. We're talking about folks who are parking il, illegally. They're making a choice to not park where they're allowed to, and that can impact public safety. But also, within this discussion, I think we also have to talk about enforcement. And so, we know that we have over 200,000 unpaid parking tickets, which amassed four and a half million dollars in, in bills that had not been paid. Um, my colleague, Councilmember, uh, Thomas, had mentioned gaming the system. There are folks that are gaming the system. There's, you know, 99,000 different license plates that have, have accumulated this much in, in parking, uh, fi, fines. 200 of them have a bonus over $1,000. 600 of them, more than $500. Um, now, the vast majority of them are what you would expect, which is, you know, somebody who parked in the wrong space and, and got a fine. But I think what we really have to do is talk also, not only about what we're doing with what are reasonable amounts for fines, but what are we gonna do about enforcement? And so, my question is, I know that letters have gone out. I think that's great. I know more letters are gonna come out, which I think is great. I think there's, I mean, there's conversations with the city judge, which is great. So, how do we make sure that we don't end up in this position again where people are being able to game the system?
Ms. Ball?
Thank you so much for the question. We, the, we're working with, um, some new technology and have been working with a judge on this that is going to allow, we already have automatic transfer of these to city court. What we don't have on the city court side is automatic processing. So, right now, it is every single citation has to be handled by hand by a member of his staff. And it's a very time-consuming process. This, um, new technology is gonna help create automation so that there is a much faster and efficient process for, for moving forward each of those citations for a formal letter and then collection. And that process, we're still in the, we're still in the figuring it out and getting the technology situated stage, but, um, we're really excited to launch it. The judge is very excited. It is so time-consuming that the steps that they have to take to process each citation.
Well, and, and I really appreciate that because, you know, I think we have to address this. We cannot allow folks to be, I mean, you potentially are endangering folks because they're parking illegally. Um, we need to make sure that, you know, we have reasonable, uh, consequences. You have an opportunity to have due process in front of the judge if, if you had a special circumstance going on. Uh, all those things need to remain, but we cannot have people parking in this way and amassing huge amounts of, of fines when the vast majority of folks are, are obeying the law. Um, so, I, I think I've run out of time, but, but I do appreciate you making those efforts, and I think we need to make sure this doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Just, just to note that the next agenda item does have another element of, uh, enforcement. Uh, Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you. Just to talk this to death, um, I, I will just say, remind everybody that a fine is a deterrent to a behavior. That's all it is. If a fine were not painful, it would be no deterrent. I don't think we need excessive, but when it is cheaper to take your chances or stay longer, it, it's not doing what we need to do. And parking, it, we've spent, uh, the city has spent a lot of time, effort, and energy to revitalize downtown where it is a thriving community. And one thing that we know from community planning is that turnover and traffic is what gets people interested in coming and, and spending money with the businesses down here. So, um, I will just say, I agree with what everybody said, but I most agree- but I most agree with what my colleague, Councilman Roberto, said. A deterrent is not a deterrent if you don't collect it. So I'm very glad that we are going to do that because if I can get a ticket and not pay it, my behavior will not change.
Thank you. Just a point of information, I got an update that has of the most recent info we got from City Court. There's 1,600 tickets. They've cleared more than 1,600 tickets since Judge Kavanaugh started processing those and gained nearly $30,000 in fees. And I know he's also come up with payment plans for people whose fees exceeded their ability to pay or couldn't pay all at once, that sort of thing. Let's see, I think Councilmember Parker is next.
Thank you, Mayor. The discussion about the parking under I-40 is one of the reasons why I think more study is needed because there are certainly times when there are available spots underneath that bridge. But that's the area of the downtown that I hang out in most, and it's not as plentiful as I'm hearing described. You know, a couple of dozen spots that are available, you know, each day. And, and so I think that needs more study. It's not the, the solution it's been represented as. I agree with you that, that, you know, spaces that aren't designed for long-term parking shouldn't be used for long-term parking, but they are because of lack of options. And I know folks like to point to the parking garages downtown. But if you are working on the other side of, of, of the old city and you're a bartender and you're working until 1 o'clock in the morning, you don't necessarily want to walk all the way down Gay Street to the garages late at night, right? People are going to park where they feel most safe, closer, not because they're lazy, not because of whatever derogative things we want to say to dismiss people's concerns. But there are some real issues that we're not thinking through, we're not discussing, and safety is one of the main things. I think about my friends who work downtown, who have to go to their cars late at night. I worry about myself going to my car late at night when I'm downtown, and I like to park as close as possible. What I've seen in other cities that still is a major regret for me is the lack of planning for parking when we talked about the baseball stadium. I just took a trip to Portugal, Lisbon, beautiful, old city. Oh, the, the history in that city, amazing, walkable city, amazing. Underground garages, underground garages in this historic city. Just dug out all the, you know, modern amenities stuck right up under this historic city. Nobody's coming into that town saying, you know, we just want to be a walkable city. Let's just pretend that no one has cars here. We have great trains and buses, which they do. We don't have those things. But we want to try to pretend like folks have options when we have the ability to plan. We've missed a major opportunity to provide an underground parking structure on that side of the city, instead of trying to tell everybody that they need to walk to the garages on the other side of downtown at all times of the day and night. It's just aggravating. There's more for us to think about and there's better planning that can be done. The, the discussion about are people gaming the system and are we going to, what are we going to do about enforcement? People aren't gaming the system, they're surviving poverty. They're surviving poverty. If people aren't parking in a garage for $7, it's because they can't afford that $7. I remember working downtown, making $8 an hour. A lot of people working downtown are still making $8 an hour. And I couldn't afford for three hours of my time to go towards paying for parking. That's a whole phone bill. When you have that limited income, yes, even that $7 purchase is a big deal. And it really, really concerns me, the way that we've been talking about this. There are other ways to incentivize other behavior, give them better options. We don't have to turn this into a, an expansion of our criminal justice system. We don't have to have folks walking around with a bunch of tickets that they can't afford to pay. And now we got somebody going after them to get these little piddly dollars that ain't going to do nothing for our coffers anyway. Let's do, let's build a city that works for our residents, and that is a joy to live in. That's what Knoxville has been, is a joy to live in. And we're making decisions that are going to make it harder for people to live in it. Let's not be punitive. Let's give people better options.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, there was a comment made about the parking in the old city. The two parking lots beside Adopo Pizza and, and Magnolia, those remain free, correct?
Yeah, the T dot parking lots that I think you're talking about, that's 225 spaces and those will remain free. And our evenings and weekends in our garages will remain free.
So free, safe, convenient, okay, thank you.
Councilmember, oh, all the lights, no more lights on, okay.
Councilman Smith said what I was going to say.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six-two. Okay, next item, please.
12B is an ordinance amending Chapter 17, Article 2, Division 4, Section 17-98 of the Knoxville City Code, giving authority to municipal enforcement officers employed by the Public Building Authority to tow and impound any vehicle, any, I'm sorry, any vehicle in violation of City Code on public property.
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve, has been made to approve, has also been seconded. Any questions or discussion, Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I just wanted to state it for the record, what this enables, because there was a lot of misconception and people thought that it was going to make cars towable.
Ms. Ball, can you explain this 12B item, please?
Certainly. The, currently, our code, our, first of all, our Public Building Authority officers, they are sworn officers, they are currently our parking enforcement team. They are the ones issuing citations. At present, the way our code reads, if there is, as Chief Sharp mentioned a moment ago, a car that is blocking a fire hydrant, they have to call for a KPD officer to come on-site to be able to tow that vehicle.
So to come off a beat.
To come off of whatever their, their current work is, to be able to tow a vehicle. What this is going to allow that particular PBA officer to do is to call for towing themselves directly.
Without tying up an officer.
Without tying up an officer.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12C is an ordinance amending Chapter 13, Article 3, Division 1 of the Knoxville City Code to reflect changes to the processes of fee collection for non-residential waste collection services for the downtown Knoxville Alliance area, formerly known as the Central Business Improvement, Improvement District.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve, has also been seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12D is an ordinance amending Chapter 11 of the Knoxville City Code so as to adopt the 2024 edition of the International Fire Code, including appendices B, C, D, and O, with amendments with an effective date of January 1st, 2025.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12E is an ordinance approving the request of Jim Odell for an amendment to the North City Sector Plan from Office to Neighborhood Commercial for property located at Zero Life Spring Lane, 4th District.
I'd like to make a motion to combine items 12E, F, and G to be heard as one.
Okay, motion made to combine 12E, F, and G has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion to combine? Seeing, Councilmember Ryder, you don't have anything to add on the motion, okay. All those in favor of this combination, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion to combine carries. Councilmembers, we do have some people signed up to speak on these items in opposition. Okay, first is Keith McAllister. Mr. McAllister, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Keith McAllister, 5709 Lagerfield Lane, Knoxville. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I stand before you, representing the voices that cannot be heard. We are only given five minutes to convey, to convince you to vote against the rezoning. We only have 15 minutes to change your vote that will alter our community for a lifetime. I am just one of the voices for our community. I am the Vice President of the Wingate Community HOA. I present, represent members of the community, the church, a concerned father, and registered voters. Together, we all want to express our collective opposition to the rezoning of this commercial property development zoning. Our peaceful neighborhood is a sanctuary, not only for our families, our children, and others during the holiday. However, our sanctuary is under direct threat. The introduction of a massive commercial building will permanently alter the scenic character of our community. We cherish the quiet tranquility, the starry nights, and the sense of community, all of which defies, defines the surrounding neighborhoods. The three 5,000-square-foot commercial structures would not only disrupt this peaceful setting, but also invite unwanted noise, light pollution, and increased traffic and the potential crime. Unlike office buildings, which provide a buffer between commercial and residential zones, neighborhood commercial areas often gather, often generate more frequent trips per customer. This increases foot traffic, vehicle congestion, would inevitably impact our quality of life. The road on Life Spring would not sustain the trucks for deliveries, the traffic that would go to the buildings. The expansion of the Washington Pike has been in planning since about 2015. We were told few times that the project is locked in and ready to go, break ground. The Tennessee Department of Transportation has pulled the funding for the Washington Pike project and allocated it to Cumberland Expansion Project. We, the residents, have been disrespected and ignored by the developer's refusal to engage with us directly, sending his children as proxies and a blatant disregard for our concerns. We've asked for fundamentally, that, let's see, we asked for transparency and accountability from those who seek to fundamentally change our community. Never once were we given a direct answer on what we are, what they were going to build. We were repeatedly told that they have nothing on paper. We all know you don't request the change of zoning without having a building design in mind, plans ready, and you know what potential clients are going to go into those buildings and who you're targeting. Clearly, the actions are hiding what they want to, want, and their intent also raises an additional concern to us. The unchecked expansion of Washington Pike is a recipe for disaster, plagued with accidents every four days, and it does not include the traffic fatality in recent weeks. Washington Pike is a stark reminder of the road's inherent danger and commercial building that is, will only exacerbate the problem. It will further endanger the lives, destroying the quality of life for our countless residents, bringing unwanted elements and down, bringing down property value that is something that we don't take lightly. We urge you, as our elected officials, to prioritize the well-being of our community, reject this ill-conceived commercial development attempt at rezoning, let us protect our neighborhood's character, preserve our peace and quiet, and ensure the safety and prosperous future for our generations to come. Don't take away one of the, the safe communities that we have left in the area for the sake of a developer looking to put more money in his pocket. In my hand is a list, is a list of 294 names that are against this commercial zoning. These are members of the residents of Wingate, Summer Rose, Shannon Valley, Legends of Oak, Life Spring Senior Center, Arlington Baptist Church, Pebblestone Community, and we are strong opposition to this rezoning project. I thank you all for allowing me to speak on the community's behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak in opposition to item 12E is Jennifer Skates. Ms. Skates? If you could approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Skates. I'm also a resident of Wingate. I'm a commercial and residential real estate agent, actually broker. And as we know, that the real estate in question is currently zoned as office, and the developers want to rezone it to Neighborhood Commercial. It does, but up next to our residential development and rezoning it would actually decrease the value of the first 10 homes in the development. So the actual zoning there of that piece of property was zoned office as a buffer to that development there, to keep it as a buffer. So I do believe that keeping it zoned office would, one, keep the values for the residential, those 10, actually, those 10 would benefit not just the community, but those 10 homes there. Because if you do, if you rezoned it, the Neighborhood Commercial, that would significantly devalue the first 10 homes there and would ultimately make them have to probably, I wouldn't say probably, but would have to force them into selling or making them rental homes. Because having the development into Neighborhood Commercial doesn't really make people want to move there, to have the Neighborhood Commercial behind them. And it, like I said, decreases their property values. So it would ultimately force them into having those properties either sell for less or turning those homes into rentals. But again, that property was put as a buffer for the community in keeping it office. So, but, thank you for your time and keeping it hopefully as a buffer for office.
Thank you. Counsel, that concludes the people who signed up to speak on this item.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to deny these requests.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made to deny the combined 12E, F, and G. It's been made and seconded. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, so a couple of comments about why this, if you guys, my colleagues remember, the last meeting, this was postponed, and we did organize a meeting with the developer and the neighbors. This property was annexed by the city, and if you look in our packet, it was, it's been declined for rezoning multiple times. When it was annexed by the city later on, after multiple requests to decline to rezone it, it has a history of being residential zoned. When it was annexed by the city, it was converted to office and intentionally stated that the office was a buffer to the commercial, the CG2 parcel now that's across Life Spring. The, the office and commercial neighborhood, which is the request of the developer, is, there's very little difference. The size, setbacks are all the same. They are practically mirror images of each other with just a couple of exceptions, which include uses like special-use gas station and a few others that would be the subtle difference, or the not-so-subtle difference of night hours versus day uses. I will state that both zones, office and commercial neighborhood, allow all housing types. So, and the property owner purchased the property as office. So we have spoken, and they chose not to come here this evening. I've spoken with the developer, and I just want to make a couple. Mr. McAllister, Ms. Skates, much appreciated that you guys came out and speak on behalf of your neighborhood. I do want to clarify a couple of things. They are county voters. They are county voters, they cannot vote for us. So we are not swayed by their voting for us, past or present, to be on this body. So just wanted to point that out. And just for clarity, Mr. Claybo, where are we with the Washington Pike project? Because I also, for public record, want to clarify that that is indeed in progress, though it was, I understand the community's belief that it may not happen, but because it was going to happen and then wasn't going to happen, and now we're back on, so where are we?
Yes, the project is just moved into the right-of-way phase. We're thinking that's 18 months to two years to complete all those acquisitions needed.
I think the current information on the website is we're going out for RFP in 2026.
Now, I think that, that sounds reasonable.
Okay, and the applicants for this rezoning, they have their right-of-way letter in hand. So the right-of-way letters are going out. People are getting their offers. It is happening, it's just a, when is it happening? There's a timeframe for that, so. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counsel member Helsley? Oh, no, you no longer have your light on, okay. Counsel member McKenzie? Or counsel member Parker? Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in agreement with denying this rezoning. I was able to speak with some of the residents before I, before the last meeting. And there is a resident in the city who was opposed to this as well. Not the 200-and-something folks, but, but at least one person in the city. So I think it's a, a good decision to, to deny this rezoning.
Counsel member McKenzie.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I'm, I'm very appreciative of Counsel member Ryder denying this. I have several friends who live in Summer Rose. I actually have a family member who recently moved out in that area. And to hear that, you know, the Washington Pike expansion is, is going to start moving for, the traffic is horrendous. It is absolutely horrendous out there at certain times of the day, probably more so than I've, I've been out there recently. But my first concern was, my goodness, the traffic was backed up so far, almost back to target from the light there as you come, come further down. And I thought, what in the world if someone had a medical emergency in one of those subdivisions and needed an ambulance? What that would look like, because traffic was backed up in both directions. So I appreciate the, the smart consideration. I do appreciate you guys coming out and staying to speak to this. And again, I've, I've been hearing about the traffic and some other things and about fear of certain types of rezoning for quite some time from friends that live out in that area. So I think this is a, a good move for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel member Thomas, and then Helsley.
Yes, I agree with the denial on this one and also appreciate the neighbors coming out. Very well said, very articulated. This is just really an example of a neighborhood that's just trying to protect its sense of community, which is lacking a lot and, and getting harder and harder to maintain. And, you know, we always have to balance out commercial interest with impacts on neighborhoods. This one, I think we're making the right decision by simply just respecting the zoning as it is. I don't see any compelling reason to change zoning here, so I'll be supporting the denial.
Counsel member Helsley.
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate. I know Councilwoman Ryder had, had the meeting with the neighborhood the other day, and there's, there was like no, really, as I understand it, cooperation from the developer at all. He sent his two sons to the meeting, so he wasn't even there. And it kind of devolved into like, I don't know, I think Lauren had to leave after an hour. But it's not that these people are totally against any kind of development, it's just that they're not being forthcoming with anything. And so I think at this point in time, I think the best thing to do is deny it until they can decide if the, if the developer actually wants to talk to the neighbors or not. Which, let me add, on the redevelopment, on the rezoning request that Director Brooks so kindly added to the rezoning request now, where you can check, yes, I have met with the neighborhood, no, I have not, or, but I do plan to before the next planning commission. They checked that box, and the planning commission meeting was October 3rd. And I think it took Lauren to get, to get a meeting like just last week, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counsel member Ryder.
Yeah, I just, I appreciate all the comments and the analysis, and I know Counselwoman Helsley, and I know where those comments came from. And I don't mean to disagree with people and their analysis of things, but I just want to not denigrate the folks that own the property and are planning to develop it. I, I'm not directing that at you or anyone. I don't feel that they are being not forthcoming. They were being very forthcoming. They literally want to build a vanilla-box building and put a sign up and rent it to whomever might want to lease the spaces. That's not not being forthcoming. They don't have tenants lined up. Ms. Skates and I talked about this at length the other night. She's a commercial realtor. That is a common practice. You get something vanilla-box ready, rent it to, and the, and the difference in commercial neighborhood and office was that it expanded the uses that they could use. They, they could do retail, and they could do restaurants, and they could do microbrewery, but they couldn't do that with office. So it opened the palate up. The difference for the neighbors is it opened the palate up to things that are nighttime. The meeting was confrontational and was not pleasant. I will be honest about that. Both parties felt that, you know, they were losing something. So everybody was a little bit testy, but it was fine. And they will be building there. That is their intention. They may choose to do residential now instead. And so that, you know, and as far as who came to the meeting, the architect for, who is the actual applicant, came. And also, I believe, the sons who were there versus the named owner on the property. I believe it is their project. I don't think that there was any not forthcoming about that. I think that is who will be managing and interacting with the architect. So I just want to clear the record and, because we may see these folks again, and they certainly may be seen in the building department pulling permits. And so they have every right to do with the property what it was zoned for, when they purchased it, speculatively. And, and I highly anticipate that is what they were going to do. So I just, I wanted to make sure that they're fairly represented as well, since they chose not to come here this evening. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of this denial, please say yes. Any opposed? Motion to deny carries. We'll move on to public forum. There are three people signed up to speak at public forum. First is Ms. Vivian Shipe. Ms. Shipe, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Good evening, Vivian Shipe. 503 Longview Road, Knoxville, 37919. And I've just come to bring you a message. And I saw the leaders of the land line up, one by one, before a great gathering of witnesses, seen and unseen. One by one, they stepped up in front of the judge who held the Bible of their choice. One by one, they laid their hand upon it and lifted the other, each one cutting covenant with the highest power above them all, each one promising to be a representative for all who lived in the city. The greatest of them all pledging to be a leader for all people. The leaders who would take their place to the left and right of this great leader, also taking an oath to represent and care for all people, the rich, the poor, the homeless, the mentally ill, the haves, and the have-nothings. The leaders were called to speak for those who cannot speak for themselves, for the rights of the destitute, to speak up and judge fairly, to defend the rights of the poor and the needy. And yet, I hold this against you. For you have forgotten your first love. Consider how far you have fallen. Repent and do those things you did at first.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Anthony Jackson. Possibly goes by Tim, is what it says. Mr. Jackson, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Thank you so very much. Anthony Jackson, address 4328 Eddington Road, living in the Vestal community. Member of the Vestal United Methodist Church that has helped with the Warming Center last year. And we will be helping again this year. Today has been such a stressful day. I know the gravity of where we are right now. And as someone who chose Knoxville 25 years ago, coming from a small town called Onata, about an hour up the road, and I thought I was moving to the big city. Everybody thought I was crazy, but I wanted out of Onata. I wanted to seek opportunity. I am a very, very proud member of my church. I've been a member, it'd be two years in February. And one of the things that I love about my church is to be a part of a church that has actually chosen to be the church. It's been a long time that I believe the church has been asleep. I think that we've kind of let other people drive the direction that we're going. And I just feel that for us, we're being the church. We're being the church. I've lived in Knoxville for 25 years, and I've seen personally two 10-year plans to end homelessness. And the situation doesn't seem to be any better. If anything, I know that it's worse. Before I moved to Knoxville, I never saw a homeless person. I saw them on TV, I saw them in movies. But when I moved here, I saw the homeless. It moved my heart, it moved my spirit. My faith is so important to me that it wasn't a homeless person. It was a person. It was somebody's son, their daughter. It was somebody that had value at some point. And by no fault of their own, sometimes they're there. I was that person. When the housing market went all crazy, my landlord, and I did not hold it against her, decided she wanted to sell the, the home I'd rented for 10 years. She saw an opportunity to make a lot of money on a rental property, and I understood. But with rent being the way that it is right now, that wasn't an option. I couldn't buy, because everybody was paying cash, sight unseen. They didn't even have to see the property. They were paying more than the, the home was worth. I had no option. Statistics right now is 1,800 homeless people seek services a day. 1,800. That's the ones we know about. I was one of the ones you didn't know about. Because my dad taught me, if you want something, you work hard. You earn it. You don't ask for help. So for a month and a half, I was homeless. Slept in my car, didn't ask for help, because I said I could make it. So when I joined Vestal, we saw an opportunity. We had an empty building. We had the love, the compassion. And after serving at the Warming Center for eight days, we signed up for four hours. We thought we were doing four-hour shifts when the snow began to fall. And the snow fell, the ice was on the ground. Instead of four hours, I ended up eight days at Vestal. And for eight days, we had approximately 65 people in our care. We had a veteran, his name was Arthur. I'll never forget him. He came in with snow in his beard. He was shivering, he couldn't even communicate to us. He went to the cot and collapsed. He didn't want anything else except a blanket and to warm up. Those eight days gave us the opportunity to see the homeless in a different perspective. And in eight days, with love, care, compassion, a lot of people were able to come out of that survival mode that they've been in constantly, day in, 24 hours. They don't get to come out of survival mode. They don't get to come out of emergency. And I just thank you guys. We want to work with you, we want to end homelessness, we want to be a solution. Help us do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak, Scott Cochran. Mr. Cochran, if you could come to the podium and please state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Hello, I'm Scott Cochran, 1413 North Fourth Avenue. I am the chairman of the church council, Magnolia Avenue, United Methodist Church. We also work with our sister church, Vestal. And thank you, AJ. Magnolia Avenue, United Methodist Church and Vestal were closed. Magnolia was condemned at one point, and there was a lot of work done to open that up. And there was a lot of progress since then. We now have a medical clinic and dental clinic that's open on Mondays. We, CAC comes in, other organizations come in. I don't want to try to list them, because I'll leave somebody out. On Monday, and we serve, and we have Bible studies. On Sunday, we have, we have our service, and we also serve meals. Again, for a lot of the homeless folks, those are the only two meals we have. I just want to say that, again, like what AJ was talking about with Vestal, is these are churches that are truly doing what our faith tells us to do. And, and it's just amazing to be a part of that. I've been a part of many other churches where you come, you check the box, you read your Bible, you, you come to the worship service, and then you leave. This one actually works. Every day, we're doing something. What I want to, before I run out of time, talk about is the, the shelters. I've, it's interesting, coming, this is my first city council, and coming in and seeing the different strata of issues that the city council has to deal with. And a lot of what I heard was housing. What we're talking about, what I'm talking about today is not housing, but shelter, and the emergency shelters. Christmas 2022, we opened up as a shelter for three days over Christmas, because it had gotten down, it was actually below zero. And then January, for eight days, we opened. And I, I took the, the whole week off work. It was 18-hour days for me feeding. We fed at, I believe, at Vestal, over 1,000 meals. At Magnolia, we had 150 people staying there, and we fed over 3,000 meals during that time. And we do feel that us being able to open and, and provide warm space saved a lot of lives. And I want to say thank you very much to the city of Knoxville for working with the church and helping us become that shelter, that emergency shelter. So I thank you. I believe there was some confusion, some talk, but I believe that everything's under control now that we are going to open again as an emergency shelter this weekend. Friday, I think we dipped below that magic number of 25 degrees. And then again on Sunday and Monday. I haven't been able to see out there with Tuesday. One of the things I'd like to ask is, as we're looking at shelter, is, is for the city to continue to come alongside of us and, and help us find out what we can do better to become safer as a shelter. Because right now, we're classified really only as an emergency shelter. We're lacking in a few things, like, like our sprinkler system or, or fire alarm system, or things like that. We do need help, and I think the city and what we've done so far with, with opening that one Christmas, we've had now that one Christmas, we've had now three churches open in January. We now have at least four, and I know that there's other churches of other denominations that are coming to us asking, how can we also become that? So if we can work with the city and the city work with us, and come up with a formula that can be copied and pasted with some of these other churches, we can save a lot of lives, and we can be also a model for other cities, where there's cooperation and progress between faith-based, faith-based organizations and also the secular. So I thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Cannon. Thank you, Vice Mayor Smith, and the city council.
Okay. Thank you very much. Council members, that concludes public forum, and without objection, this meeting is adjourned.